And while Chief's making his way up, everybody can rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Groo, why don't you lead us tonight?
Justice Barrett, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Mike is hot, Chief.
If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we thank you for the rain that you delivered to much of central Florida today, and we pray that you would bless us with some more rain, and we know there's some forecast for tomorrow's. We thank you, Lord, for the protection that you've afforded all of our public safety personnel, our firefighters, and Florida Division of Forestry, and all their efforts throughout the state. It's been a monumental season, and there's been relatively few injuries associated with it. Father God, we pray for our state legislators as they wrap up this week, and that you would give them confidence and due diligence that they would make the right decisions for their communities and for our state. Father God, we pray for a few city employees that are still battling some serious health issues, or that you would comfort them, heal them, bless their families. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Chief, did you also have an announcement you wanted to make?
Yes. Counselor, you saw my email from Friday. The city manager and I have requested a proclamation declaring a local state of emergency. Last week kind of was a pivotable week where the drought index hit that threshold that really starts to alarm me, so we enacted that. The mayor signed it. Tonight's more of a formality. That's part of our comprehensive emergency management plan. It allows us to forego some of the traditional purchasing policies during disasters. In case phone supplies or something become difficult to acquire, we can buy them by other means, things of that nature. So I appreciate the mayor signing that and us enacting that. And finally, just to remind you, Memorial Day ceremony, don't forget. I don't think we meet again except for a workshop before that. Please arrive about 8:30. The ceremony starts promptly at 9 o'clock, and all of you will be seated on the Jimmy Buffett stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order is approximately 6:35 PM. We have all members of council present this evening. Our first order of business is Police Week proclamation, which I have here to read and then present to the chief. And this one is a proclamation from the City of Oviedo, Seminole County, Florida, and it reads, "Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Oviedo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Oviedo, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of law enforcement, and that members of the Oviedo Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Oviedo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I Dominic Saint Pierre, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, I do hereby proclaim May 14 through May 20, 2017, as National Police Week in the City of Oviedo, and urge the citizens of Oviedo to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And further, call upon all citizens of Oviedo to observe May 15, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand this first day of May 2017." Chief, you know, the work that all of the officers do, and former chief is in our audience as well, it's just, without saying, it's just amazing that you all go out there, protect us, put your lives ahead of ours, and, I mean, this little piece of paper doesn't do it any justice, but Chief, I'll bring it down to you in just a moment, and we do appreciate it, Chief. All righty. If everyone can join me from the dais, and Denise, if you can come on up, we're going to read this one down here.
All right.
We have another proclamation, and I don't know if, I won't dwell on the story, but Denise had a daughter who passed from a very rare disease, a brain tumor, and every year since, she has dedicated her life to finding a cure for this disease. She runs a 5K every year for Caitlin. This year, it's going to be at Oviedo on the Park, Sunday morning at 7:30, I think it is.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock is the start of the 5K? All righty, so 7:00, 7:30, come and register. At Oviedo on the Park, there's going to be a half-day festival, I believe, until about noon, after the race for the kids. So everybody come on down, have a great time, make some donations, because the cause and the heart and soul that this woman puts into it, you just would not believe. So Denise, for the diffuse intrisnic ponting glioma, did I get that right? Not at all? Did I kill it? What is it?
Diffuse intrinsic ponting glioma.
Okay. That one. Is a brain tumor that is found in part of the brain stem that controls essential bodily functions such as heartbeat, breathing, swallowing, eye movement, eyesight, and balance. And whereas DIPG affects between 200 and 400 children in the United States each and every year, whereas brain tumors are the leading cause of cancer-related deaths in children, whereas DIPG is the second most common malignant brain tumor found in children and the leading cause of childhood death due to brain tumors, and whereas prognosis has not improved for children with DIPG in more than 55 years, but new medical technology and research finally offer hope for treatments for children afflicted with this disease, and whereas the City of Oviedo is pleased to help increase public awareness of this deadly childhood cancer. Now therefore, I Dominic Saint Pierre, Mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 17, 2017, as DIPG Awareness Day in the City of Oviedo, Florida, in an effort to raise awareness and encourage research into cures for DIPG and pediatric cancers
Our next order of business is the approval of the minutes for the April 12 special session
in general. And I have set my signature to this, so Denise, let me present this to you.
and the April 17 regular session.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
I know it's hard.
Thank you very much.
It's the least we can do.
So moved.
See you on Sunday. Second. We have motion second. Anything you'd like to say there, everybody? Any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote.
It's a national, it's a House resolution nationally right now to have this day recognized
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, public comment portion of our meeting.
as DIPG Awareness Day. It is stuck in an Energy and Commerce Committee. I did not write this and send it to the House. I didn't know about it until after it sat in that committee, and I was just asked to
This is for public comment for any item that we do not have on our agendas.
help promote awareness for it and try to do what I could do locally.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council at this time?
May 17th, coincidentally, if you believe in coincidences, happens to be Caitlin's birthday.
Seeing and hearing none, going to close the public comment and move on to the consent
So thank you very much.
It's our pleasure. Least that we can do. agenda this evening, which are items number four through 10. We'll see you on Sunday.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have motion to have a second?
Second.
You have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Nope.
I might want to pull off number 10 and have a discussion about that, but we'll leave it alone. All righty. Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All in favor approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. No public hearings, no first reading of ordinances, but we do have one resolution this evening, and there's Resolution 3410-17, and it's Site Development Order 476-17. I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve Site Development Order Number 476-17. This is a supplemental site development order to a Development Order 459-16 that was approved by city council. Development Order 459-16 approved the Evans Square subdivision. This, the subject, Site Development Order amends the subdivision plan, primarily the landscape plan. The developer has encountered some situations on five of the lots that involve trees that were identified in the preliminary subdivision plan to be saved. There are also two other lots that the trees, the developer has determined that those trees need to be removed. The proposed amendment provides for the developer to address the five primary trees, the ones on lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 28, to be able to give them the ability to address how to deal with those trees on an individual basis. They encountered some issues with the mass grading of the property, and the next type of grading will be to take it to finished floor. And what they would like to do is to have the ability to, when they're working on the individual lots, to determine how to address those trees. They have come up with ideas that involve either building barriers around the trees, call it dry stacking. They have also looked at the possibility of relocating the trees. And then the third and final worst-case scenario would be the removal of the trees. There are some conditions that are involved with the removal of the trees that they would have to go through the mitigation process. There are some other trees that are on lots 11 and 12. Those trees, they need to have removed, and they are proposing to plant three 4-inch bald cypress trees around the stormwater pond to mitigate the removal of those trees. The staff has reviewed the request, and they recommend approval. The city attorney has reviewed and found no legal objection. It's recommended that council adopt Resolution 3410-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present? Just name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Richard German, 1640 Eagle Nest Circle, Winter Springs. When we did the original plan, obviously, we were dealing with a flat piece of paper and a tree survey, which existed way back when. We got into the grading of the site with both requirements of the water management district, et cetera. We realized that there's four lots on Hillcrest and two on South Lake Jessup that had trees that we had intended to save that may be at risk. We could have done nothing, I guess, and just gone ahead and built the houses, and if a year from now some of those trees died, so be it, but we did not think that was a responsible thing to do, since we represented to the community that we would save those trees. So we worked with staff to come up with a plan, as Mr. Cobb outlined, to try to, we're going to have to take it on a case-by-case basis. If we don't feel with our landscape people and our arborists that we can save a tree once we know what house is going to be built on that lot, then we'll come up with a replacement program to mitigate the loss of that tree. Or if we can build the retaining walls around it and save it that way, we intend to do it. So our objective is to first try to save them, which is why we've asked for the alternative of, you know, the option of taking it on a case-by-case basis, so we can attempt to save all that we can. We've also agreed, I don't know if it's in the report, but Dr. Carrera and I have talked about definitely one of the replacement trees, if we have to take one out, would be planted in the respective location on the front of lot where the one that we're taking out. And we will not use the 2.5-caliper minimum that the city requires. We'll go to three, so we get a bigger tree on that site. So we think we're being responsible about trying to work with really six trees where we think we may or may not have a problem. Any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Anybody have any questions to the developer at this time?
I guess I have a technical question. As I saw this project progressing, it looked like lots of dirt was being stacked around these trees, and I thought, well, that's not going to let them live. Was that not something that the engineers anticipated? I don't even understand why that much dirt is...
No, most of them, we have not done that to the trees that we intend to save. Most of them are fine. We recognize which is part of the problem. The lots are higher, and we can't plant dirt around those trees that'll kill them. So we either have to build a retaining area around them to keep them low at their root base where they are existing now, or we have to do something different.
So at this time, are the trees currently, they're okay?
They're fine.
They can all, in theory, be saved at this time?
Yes, until we know what model goes on that lot and what other issues we may have. We just think that there is some risk, and we're trying to be responsible to disclose that now, so we don't wake up a year from now and the trees are dead, that we didn't do anything.
Has the builder, or, I guess we're kind of in transition, part owned by the end user, part is, well, not end user, but the middleman user, and part is still owned by the developer, or whatever we're going to call you.
Developer.
Okay.
The builder, we will work with our builder, which is David Weekly Holmes, when he builds on those particular lots that are in question.
Have they identified which models may work around those trees versus not, so they could let...
Well, I mean, part of it has to do with the buyer and the model that they desire. I mean, we'll try to avoid that, and maybe there are some models that will fit. We're just concerned, and we're trying to be ahead of the game, so to speak, and disclose this and say, hey, we think we might have a problem. We may not on, you know, we may save most of them, half of them, I don't know yet. But our first effort is to save them.
So David Weekly then has not yet identified which models would...
Well, he doesn't have a buyer for those particular lots.
Exactly, but if they look at the lots and where the trees are located and how the lot lines are situated, it sounds like there may be some models that work, so they could say, hey, if you want to put, if you want that model on that lot, you're getting a tree with it, so...
Right. They're on board with us, and we're going to try to, you know, as I said, do what we can. It's just that we don't want to be irresponsible, not say anything, and then a year from now, a couple of them are dead, and everybody says, what happened here?
All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public comment portion of the meeting. I do have two written requests. First one is from Mr. Chuck Drago. Or do you want Cindy Drago to go first?
Yeah, Cindy Drago.
All right. Councilwoman, how are you?
I'm wonderful. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Well, I have to say, after hearing about the Police Week and how important that is, police officers, my husband being a former police officer, and seeing someone here who lost a child, this seems rather insignificant to even talk about, but it is very near and dear to my heart, so I'm going to go and push through this. Last year, on April 18, we, when I say we, I was part of city council at that time with the three of you and Councilwoman Schenck, we adopted Resolution 3163-16. It took many months to come to a conclusion, and we worked with the developer, because many people in that area did not like that development coming in. And the first plan was an urban development that had them five feet away from the road. Just didn't fit into that neighborhood. If you remember, the chambers were full with all the neighbors around there, they didn't like it. So after many months of working with Mr. German, which he was wonderful to work with, and the owner, we all came to a conclusion, and we all voted yes. It was a 5-0 vote. One of the most important issues that, besides the lot size of where the houses were going to be built, was the trees. And I say that because if you don't know that area, it is an older area. We have trees that are at least 30 feet high, have a large, huge canopy, and it really speaks of the character of that area. And people love that. We love it. People love walking down that road, having those trees. So that was one issue. As Mr. German did say, he knew it was an issue when we talked about it. So they agreed to keep the five oak trees on Hillcrest and the oak trees on South Lake Jessup. They did have to take one out near the pond where they put it in, and that was agreed, but we all agreed. We had a deal. So I guess I'm here now to ask you to stick to that deal, because when they started developing, and Councilwoman Sladek was absolutely right, they brought in dirt. They dumped the dirt there, they put it right up to the trees. Now, it was probably about two or three feet high of that dirt, so I contacted Dr. Carrera and Mr. Cobb and said, that dirt's going to kill the trees. Please have them remove it. They came on and they moved the dirt, dug it out by hand, but they did nothing to keep that dirt from going back in there. So after a few rains, the dirt fell in there again. I made the phone call and said, can you please call them and tell them to get that dirt off of the roots, because it's going to kill those trees. So still, there's still nothing there. That dry stack is not there. That should have been done a year ago to keep the dirt from those trees, if they were really going to keep them. I feel as if they agree to it, and now I'm gone, so no one's in that neighborhood to really fight for it, so they're going to come and take out all those trees. If you remove those trees, it's going to really change the landscape and the character of those neighborhoods. That is one thing that we were very specific, and we just love, I know a lot of people don't like trees, they like concrete, but people in that area live in that area for those trees. Most of the houses there are on large lots, and we had agreed to let them put the houses on smaller lots, and the houses they're building aren't very nice. They look real nice there, so I don't have a problem with that. So my question is, in your package, there's a drawing of the lots that were plotted. They put five houses on Hillcrest. That's a lot of houses along that street. And you see where the trees are. The trees were there, so then, and they put the lots on. My question is, didn't they know that the trees were there and that they would have a problem if they tried to build certain homes on there? So I have, my question is, why not eliminate one of those homes, fill it in where they can build it, and not remove the trees that have taken 30 or 40 years for them to grow? Because really, you replace them with one of the trees that they have planted down there, it's going to take them 20 years for them to grow. I'm not even going to be around in 20 years, maybe not. Maybe, maybe not. You know, but a lot of us will not be here to see that and enjoy it. It takes a long time for them to grow. And then my second question is, when they started doing the elevation and preparing the infrastructure, they brought in all this dirt and they put it on right against Hillcrest, so it really built it up. Now, if you go there and look, you're going to see a higher elevation against Hillcrest, and then it goes down a little bit to meet another level. Why wasn't that just kept the level it was? So I do have a lot of questions about that. And then in the resolution, it says itself, under strategic impact, it says it's to maintain and enhance neighborhood quality. And I don't know anyone in my neighborhood that thinks that that's going to help at all. In fact, it's going to make it worse, because really, their quality is not our quality. And everyone likes something different, but that is our neighborhood, and we're asking that you just ask them to stick to their deal. We made a deal, and the neighbors all approved it. They were happy, happy with it, but they agreed to it. And if you change it now, I'm afraid they are going to lose faith in our city council and our government, because it wasn't done at the time. They come in later and ask for it. So, thank you.
Next request is Chuck Drago.
Hi, my name is Chuck Drago, and I just want to speak a little bit about this myself. I don't want to go over everything that Cindy said, but I want to hit a couple of those points and maybe a few others. Of course, we did have, she talked about the agreement that we had. The neighborhood was not thrilled about the development, but I am not, I'm not anti-development. I'm not, I'm certainly not, I understand people's rights to develop and build on their property, so that has nothing to do with this. What I'm concerned about is the process that we go through. And people expect this process or have to have confidence in this process. And the process I'm talking about is when the developer comes here, makes requests to approve a certain site development, the people come in, voice their opinions, ask for certain things. The developer, the city council asks the developer and the neighborhoods to get together, see if they can work out some of the issues. They all do that, and then six months or a year later, the developer comes back and says, I can't do it. Yeah, I said I was going to do it, but I can't do it. And I heard Mr. German say, well, we want to put the houses on there that we want to put on there. So there goes our agreement to keep the trees, because if it gets in the way of what we want to do, we want to take out the trees. This shouldn't be a surprise to any developer that those trees are going to be an issue, but I wonder if a developer agrees to certain things when he has maybe a weaker negotiating stance, when he has to fight the community, than maybe six or eight months or a year later, when he maybe feels he has a stronger negotiating stance. The site's already been developed, houses are being built. Now you can take that and negotiate that one issue. And anybody that's done negotiating understands that that's the worst position you can be in when you're the one defending that one issue that's been brought down to the one issue that you have to now fight and defend. But the public have to have confidence in this process. People get annoyed about development, and not necessarily agreeing with their reasons for it, but I do agree with their concerns about the process being fair, open, and something that they can trust. And if the process means nothing, and the agreements get thrown out the window just because a developer can't fit the house he wants on there, then there's no sense in having a process. It's a farce to invite the neighborhood to come in and sit down and take time out of their busy day to talk about it when they know it's not going to ever be followed through on. The trees, as Cindy was saying before, Cindy and I walk by there almost every day. Cindy made phone call after phone call after phone call, because when they started to grade those lots, they filled in very close to the chunks of those trees. We all know that's going to suffocate the trees and kill the trees. It was just, it's not a surprise to anybody that that could happen. A retaining wall could have been built back then and should have been built to keep those trees safe. To say now that we're going to fix these problems, or the developers are going to fix these problems, if they went into it first by building the retaining wall, which could have been and should have been done before, or replacing the trees, which is absolutely ridiculous, to safely replace those old trees with small little trees that are going to take years and years to grow. It just doesn't reconcile the loss of those trees. People get annoyed about development, and not necessarily agreeing with their reasons for it, but I do agree with their concerns about the process being fair, open, and something that they can trust. And if the process means nothing, and the agreements get thrown out the window just because a developer can't fit the house he wants on there, then it's, there's no sense in having a process. It's a farce to invite the neighborhood to come in and sit down and take time out of their busy day to talk about it when they know it's not going to ever be followed through on. The trees, as Cindy was saying before, Cindy and I walk by there almost every day. Cindy made phone call after phone call after phone call because when they started to grade those lots, they filled in very close to the chunks of those trees. We all know that's gonna suffocate the trees and kill the trees. It was just, it's not a surprise to anybody that that could happen. A retaining wall could've been built back then and should've been built to keep those trees safe. To say now that we're gonna, we're going to fix these problems, or the developers are gonna fix these problems, if they went into it first by building the retaining wall, which could've been and should've been done before, or replacing the trees, which is absolutely ridiculous, to safely replace those old trees with small little trees that are gonna take years and years to grow. It just doesn't reconcile the loss of those trees. The, there was one other thing I wanted to say, and it just went right out of my head. It's tough when you get old. But, the, the issue with the trees is that there's only one way you can preserve those trees now, and that is to build the walls around them and keep them safe from the grading process and the building process. And I ask that the council not approve this resolution, and that you require the developer, Mr. German, to go back and find a way to preserve those trees. Not, "I'll go back, and if I save them, I save them. If they die, oh, well, they die." I want your permission to let them die. They should follow through and stand by their agreement and their promise, preserve those trees. There's a way to do it, you just have to build the houses that fit onto those lots and preserve those trees, and restore the confidence of the people in the process, and also preserve the trees themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the written requests. Is there anybody else who'd like to address counsel on this issue? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of counsel. Need a motion from someone.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I am gonna make a, let me see, it's caught up here, 3410-17, right?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to deny Resolution 3410-17.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you're up the floor.
Well, you know, there comes a time when we have to draw the line. You know, as former chief just pointed out, nobody's anti-development. We want nice, quality things that are in our neighborhood. That area of the city, I mean, you start cutting down those big trees, you've now changed the landscape of the community. I mean, I think Evan Square, when it's all done, will be a nice place. I did support it when it came here, but I just feel like these are landmarks in our city that they could do a better job of keeping them. So, for that reason, I don't, I don't wanna have, give a blank check. We're gonna see if we, if we need to take them out. We need to know that the agreement that was made with the residents when they went out there and spoke to everybody, and Cindy, as you know, you were here. I mean, it was a packed house and there was a lot of concern, and, you know, now, when some people may not be looking one day to come out and those trees are dead or gone, to me, is just not good. Now, I will tell you, we've done lots of projects in the past with Mr. German. He's an honorable guy. I'm sure he'll figure out a way, but I can't just give somebody a blank check and one day I wake up and a 40, 50-year-old tree is gone. You know, that, to me, that's not true. And I was gonna make a motion to approve with that he'd have to come back and talk about every tree and get our approval, which was an option, but for this, and the way, the way it was presented here tonight, I think they gotta go out and fix those trees and save them and build the wall, whatever they have to do, and at least keep, you know, the landscape of one of our historic areas intact. So, that's my story.
All right. Councilmember, you're up the floor.
I was encouraged to hear that the trees are not currently in danger, so I appreciate your candor with that. And it sounds like there's an easy way to save them, just building the walls. And that there are models that the builder has that could be placed there so they could still turn a decent profit without, you know, without harming these trees. So, it sounds like there's a really good chance we can just keep the deal as it was set. So, if one happens to die in the process, I'm kinda curious, and I don't know if anybody in this room knows, are there any of these laurel oaks infected with mistletoe at this time? Does anybody know? Okay. There's a couple of trees that I consider less hardy than others, but at the same time, they're old, and if they're, if they have been there a long time and are not currently in a state of disease, saving them is the right thing to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I just add one other thing before you get into the discussion? If you look at the PSP, you know, the trees that are on 11, around lot 11 and 12, where, you know, the letters that we have say that they are, have, dead and dying, all right, we understand. Those are a safety hazard to anybody. They could fall or whatever. But as Councilwoman just pointed out, I mean, these are healthy trees here. I mean, it doesn't seem to me that this should even, I'm not even sure why this is even here with us. This should've just been fixed, and those trees should've been saved. It's gotta come a time where you stop cutting down everything, and this is one of them.
Okay. Councilmember, will you, will you?
I'll say.
Councilmember Pollak, do you have anything?
Speaking of lots 11 and 12, if we deny this, are we also not allowing them to remove the trees on 11 and 12?
Motion right now is to deny, so that we deny 11 and 12, yes.
Okay.
Are you good for now?
I'm good for now.
Councilman Britton, anything?
Yeah, a few things. Brian, has our arborists been out to look at these trees?
Through the inspection process, they've probably been out there looking at them, yes.
So they, they're saying that the trees are in good health, even though the dirt was put close to them?
They were out there with the, they've been monitoring the trees as far as keeping the dirt away from them, so yes.
I thought I saw something in here that two of the trees were not in good health? Is that the?
I think that's the trees on 11 and 12.
Okay. All right, are we gonna allow them to take those down?
It depends on what you do with your motion. Right now, your motion would not allow them to be removed.
Even if they're not in good health, or?
Correct.
How would we determine that?
My advice would be is that you would amend your motion to allow those to be removed.
Okay. Well, you know, it's been said, Dick, you know, a deal's a deal. I agree with Cindy. What I'd be more concerned with is the future. If we leave those trees up there, and it's not a smart thing to do, then what's our recourse to get it replaced or get made whole again? So, Brian, is, is there any leverage we have to ensure that those trees stay intact, stay healthy? And is there a punitive action we can take, maybe if they don't somehow survive?
The only way to, if, is through your tree restoration. That is really it.
So is the developer liable, then, if the trees die, there's a restoration process that they have to go through?
Yes, sir, the trees for Mark Preservation.
Okay. You know, I would say that, and I know developers won't like to hear this, but there are ways to build footers around foundations that allow trees to stay. I was in a place called Valencia up near Jacksonville where they required every home to be like that because they let trees live right next to the houses. And that green space is now really, really a neat amenity to that community. So, if it's, just because it makes it easier, I'm not sure it's a good idea. We need to go and see if we can save this, and Dick, good luck to you. I hope you can figure out something to work around this, maybe a smaller home, I don't know. But let's try to save these trees.
Mr. Mayor, before you speak, can I, I can amend this motion and make this a little easier.
Well, let's see where the discussion goes.
I'm just, just 11 and 12 came up, and I realize those are dead, but that's not what I was talking about.
Okay. Well, you know, what they said during public comments, both Cindy and Chuck, is true. You know, it is, it is one thing when we allow development and quality development, I should add, to happen in the city of Oviedo, but when we allow development under certain pretense, and then that pretense gets changed, no matter what the circumstances, that becomes suspect. I mean, that becomes difficult for us on the council. Out of everything in this development that was discussed during, one, two, three, at least three public hearings, maybe four, the main concern of the neighborhood were the trees along Hillcrest and Lake Jessup. It kept coming back to the trees. Even more so, I think, than the actual design of the houses once we got past that issue. If there are options of different models, I can go on lot 1, 2, 3, and 4, well, you know, I would suggest that David Weekly just, you know, I don't wanna tell anybody how to do their business, but my suggestion would be is just limit those lots to those homes, similar to what we did in MNI. We only, we limited the back lots that backed up to the homes in Cedar Bend to single-story only because of the height elevation difference. Then, there've been other circumstances where we have limited the type of home that could be built in order to accommodate those that may be affected, and in this case, it's a tree that's being affected, old growth trees. I mean, these aren't small trees. These are 30-inch caliber trees, I think I remember reading. So, I mean, there is, there is a way, but getting over to what Deputy Mayor was bringing up, I mean, 11 and 12, you know, Mr. Cobb, if our city arborists are saying that 11 and 12 are diseased, and they'll certify that, then, you know, that is something that this body may wanna consider, but I don't wanna speak of the body yet. We'll readdress that in a moment. I do think though, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and lot 28, you know, some efforts need to be taken in order to save those. But I'd rather further amend, before we talk about 11 and 12, I'd rather further amend this denial, if that's what passes, that we direct staff to make sure the developer is taking the extraordinary efforts that are needed to preserve these trees as promised during the approval process. Does the motioner agree to that? You made the motion, the seconder agree to that?
Yes.
Because, you know, that's what was promised to the neighborhood, and, you know, perhaps all construction has to stop on all of these lots where the effective trees are. I don't think there is any construction going on those lots right at this exact moment until the remediation plan is there, because it'd be too easy just to build a house, and then, as been mentioned, you know, a couple of years from now, the roots are suffocated and they die. Now, with that being said, the unfortunate part about sandy soils and water management in the state of Florida, to all of those in Facebook land who like to jump up on Facebook and excoriate municipalities in Florida for allowing clearcutting, is that our soils do not allow, with the sandiness and the amount of breathing that has to be done, for any development to be built around these trees and have them like it. They just, they just don't in Florida. The other issue that we run into in Florida, unlike every other municipality in, you know, Georgia, North Carolina, get brought up a lot by our Facebook friends, is that in those areas, the water just runs down mountains into streams, into rivers, and eventually drains out. Here in Florida, the requirement of the developer is that they create a bowl and that they hold all their own water. They can't drain their water out onto the street and then pass it on down here in the state of Florida. So it's very important that folks understand why clearcutting occurs, because it was brought up that they brought in a lot of dirt. Well, they did because in this particular development, it's required that everything runs to that pond that's on the corner of Clark and Lake Jessup, so they gotta make it all run downhill to that pond. But they can't let that water spill out onto Hillcrest, onto Clark, or onto Lake Jessup. It just isn't allowed with any development in the state of Florida. So, we had this issue with the pond come up with the commercial development on the corner of 434 and Mitchell Hammock, just our last meeting, and it was, it's the same issue. So, you know, a lot of times, folks like to say, you know, the big, bad city council is the big, bad developer, but there's other entities that tie our hands sometimes in what can be done. Now, the other thing that a lot of folks don't understand is they always say, "Well, why are they planting these small little sticks?" Well, you know, a two-and-a-half-inch caliber or a three-inch caliber tree has the greatest success rate of surviving and flourishing and growing. You know, you plant a 10-inch tree, a 10-inch tree requires an enormous amount of care to get it to root. A two-and-a-half-inch tree, you plant it, it roots, it grows. Oviedo on the Park is a perfect example. When you walk through Oviedo on the Park now, just three or four years later, and you see how those oaks are starting to take in the planter boxes, you know, those are starting to become trees now. And they will, but it does unfortunately take 10 to 20 years, and it does require patience. So, this one, I mean, I completely understand it. I understand the developer's problem, but, you know, unfortunately, with this one, we're gonna have to figure out a little bit more of a workaround in order to make it work. Counsel, it isn't normative, but the developer would like to address us one last time? Any issues?
Thank you. Dr. Carrera and I were looking at the plan. If you allow us to flip the lots 1 through 5, in other words, the driveways are, part of our problem is driveways, and where they're coming in on, if we allow, if we move the house to the other side and put the driveway on the other side, then I don't think we have any tree problems on Hillcrest.
So, Mr. German?
I mean, we still may have to manipulate the builder with certain models, but the driveways right now are also a problem, so if we can flip, can I show, can I approach the?
Yes, please. I think I understand what you would like, but.
The driveways on Hillcrest on this side, and you see the driveway, the house on this side.
Lynda, can you pull up exhibit number?
And just one last comment, Mr. Mayor. I still would really appreciate some relief on 11 and 12, and those trees don't really impact anybody there inside the development.
Yes, exhibit 2, please. EX2, it's the last one. Can you blow that up? So what the proposal is currently, once we get, it's, next slide down. Yeah, next page, please. There you go. Where, if you can blow that up at all? There we go. All right, yeah, just right there, blow it all the way up. Just get number 1 there. You could just blow it up, keep going. All right, thank you. What the developer is proposing, we'll just use number 1 and 2 as an example, currently, looking at the screen, the garage is on the left and the home is to the right, so we're gonna put the homes on the left and the garage on the right, and that should help alleviate the problem. Also, Mr. German, I'm assuming you're gonna build whatever walls that you've built around these trees to provide, to protect them. Mr. Cobb, how do you suggest that we handle something like that, or this, or Mr. Groot?
I'll let Mr. Groot confirm what I think.
If that was to be considered by the council, how would we?
My thinking, Mayor, is that you don't have to do anything. Your preliminary subdivision plan established your lot structure. It didn't establish where the building pad was, where the garage.
The staff can handle that.
Yes, sir.
Music to our ears.
The development agreement and the preliminary subdivision plan establishes the size of the lots and establishes the setbacks. As long as they're meeting those, then where the individual buildings are located really doesn't have a.
If it's left or right, it doesn't make any.
No, sir.
So this body does not have to take any action on that request. That request can be handled with staff alone.
Yes, sir. That's what I believe.
Mr. Groot, do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
All righty. All righty, counsel, so we may have a resolution to that particular issue. Now, Mr. German, if you can just come on up to the microphone real quick. All righty, so your game plan is to flip those lots. Evidently, you can work that out with staff.
Correct.
And you're also committing to building the proper retaining walls around all of these trees.
As required. If it's required and as required, yes.
All right, thank you. That's good for now.
Thank you.
Now, counsel, how do you want to address 11 and 12? I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor, he started.
I got you. All right, so I'm gonna withdraw the.
Well, you can just amend it.
Oh, really? Okay. So on Resolution 3410, we're gonna amend it to have some wording in there, and Mr. Groot, stop me if I'm going astray, but to build the retaining walls around these five trees in question, also to allow them to remove the diseased trees that are on lot 11.
12. I think it's, I think one's on 12.
Yeah, one's kinda leaning in 12, so one's encroaching into 12, so to remove those on 11 and 12. Now, can I just ask a question? I think Councilman Britton asked this. Have we, as the city, determined that these trees on 11 and 12 are actually diseased? I saw all the letters and everything, I'm not questioning it, but has our arborist certified that these trees on 11 and 12 are diseased in fact, or ready to have dead?
Awesome, Mr. Hinken, I can answer that. Honestly, Mr. Hinken, I, I can answer that right now. I, I know that our inspectors are out there almost daily, but to go in and say that the arborist has gone in and said, "Yes, these trees are dead and dying," that part I don't know.
Just require that our arborist certify.
Okay, so, so, so further in, in, for the approval on this, we're gonna just require that the city's arborists just go out there and take a look, and, and the reason is not, not, not for Mr. Axel or Mr. German, they're fine men, but this is just to give the people in the community peace of mind that the process does work, that we're gonna go out and certify that those trees are actually dead, and if they are, or they're diseased and dying, then, we can have them taken out, but the other five, the retaining walls, and they gotta do all they can to make sure that those survive.
Mr. Mayor? Just hang on one second. I, I gotta figure out this motion first.
That's what I was gonna ask.
We need to reverse it to say we're approving as to 11 and 12 only.
I don't know yet. Okay, we're not the attorneys up here? I, okay, just remember that. We have one over there. That's the only, the only attorney that matters is that one. So, Mr. Groot, tell us how we should make this motion, 'cause, so you can see what we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to...
Yes, sir. I think you can leave the resolution as it, as it is, just amend Exhibit 1, which if you look on Exhibit 1, the cited on an order amendment, the, and the conditions. Condition 1 would just be...
Mr. Groot, would you like me to take a five-minute recess?
Yes, sir.
You can figure it all out and then advise us how to best make the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just before you do that, I just wanna remind everyone, the motion is to deny this?
Currently.
Okay.
We're, we're just trying to figure out how to make the motion work.
All right.
All right, we're gonna take a recess.
Talking rocket science here.
Well, considering there was only one rocket scientist amongst you. Barbara, you ready?
Yes.
All righty, and we are back out of recess, so, Mr. Groot? Enlighten us on how we make all this happen.
Okay, step one, of course, would be to withdraw the motion to deny.
All righty, let me do, let me do that, because then we can just listen to your motion and do a quick so-move, then we'll have it correctly. Motioner, are you gonna withdraw your motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to...
No, you don't have to, just withdraw.
I'm just withdrawing 3410-17.
Second to agree, correct?
Well, I don't have to agree, you withdrew it.
That is true, but I'd just like to ask.
Too many lawyers around.
All righty, Mr. Groot, why don't you make the motion how you'd like to see it, and then we'll, council, Deputy Mayor agrees with it, we'll let him just so-move it.
Okay, the motion would be to approve ordinance, excuse me, Resolution Number 3410-17 with the amendment of the exhibit, and condition number 1 to read as follows. Five canopy trees that were approved and are planned to be preserved, located on lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 28, will be preserved in a manner approved by city staff. Condition 2 would be deleted, as unnecessary, and condition 3 would become 2, and would read as follows. Two trees located on lo, in lots 11 and 12 will be removed, comma, if certified as appropriate by the city arborist, comma, and replaced, and then the remainder would be the same.
Okay. So-move.
And second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, or does that cover it for everybody? All righty. With that being said, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion as presented by Mr. Groot? Motion by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Sladek. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, moving right along, we have no discussion items, so we are up to your report. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two, two small things. This Saturday at 9:00 here at City Hall will be the city's annual Arbor Day giveaway.
Oh, boy.
And Mr. Wyatt has informed me that we have over 600 trees to give away.
You know what kind?
9:00.
There's a whole list of them.
Oh, what kind?
Types, yes.
Uh, I would have to look, I don't have the flyer in front of me, I'm sorry. And also, would also like to let the council know that on May 19, at Eagle Creek Golf Club will be the Police Foundation Golf Tournament, and it'll be starting at, registration will be from 6:30 to 7:45, and start will be 8:00 a.m., in case you're interested. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Mr. Groot, anything for us?
Nothing for the good of the order, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All righty. Just jumping to my report, a couple of quick items. First, Chief, I'm going to assume that golf tournament's gonna be at our golf course next year, correct?
We'll be working on that right after us.
Okay, just checking, just checking. All righty, as we said earlier, the cheering for Caitlin 5K is this Sunday at 8:00 p.m. is the start, 8:00 a.m., excuse me, is the start over at Oviedo on the Park. Registration is probably 7:00, 7:30 is, is normative for 5Ks. It's a great little race, you're running in the shade if you've never run a 5K over at Oviedo on the Park, so it is fun, and then there'll be the festival up until noon, and everything goes to support everything that the Downings stand for. Also, we have National Day of Prayer here at City Hall on Thursday, but, Mr. Cobb, there seems to be conflicting times. Do we know what time it is this year?
Actually, Mayor, I'll have to go and check.
Yeah, 'cause we've heard everything from 9:00 to 12:15.
It's usually 11:00 when it's...
Usually 11:00, yes. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out, we'll see.
Could you, and then just copy the council? That way we all know. And, let's see, Mr. Cobb, you got a hold of Arbor Day, so that is this Saturday. Chief, you got the Memorial, Memorial Day event, and then we have Memorial Day 5K too, right, Drew? That's, is that Sunday, right? Saturday?
Saturday.
So that would be the 21st? And that one's earlier, if I remember.
Start at 7:30.
7:30 start time for the race?
Let me check, I may, I may be sure that day.
I thought it was even earlier. Some, some reason I thought it was 7:00.
It's the 27th. It's May the 27th.
May the 27th.
7:30 a.m.
7:30 a.m. start, and that is the, what, what are we calling that? The Memorial 5K? What's the name of that one, Drew?
It's a Veterans Tribute 5K.
Veterans Tribute 5K, and that one's also at Oviedo on the Park.
It might be starting at early 7:00. I gotta go check.
Yeah, I, I thought I saw something that said 7:00, somewhere along the line, but, all righty, well, we can re-announce that one at the next meeting. And that is the end of my report. Who is up next? It is Bob Pollak.
I have no report.
Wow, you're our hero. Council, Deputy Mayor?
Just a quick thing. Mr. Cobb, can you just, I know I spoke to you on the phone, Councilwoman, you'll appreciate this, the Friends of Lake Jessup is sort of getting revived again, so we have a letter that we're gonna send to basically every senator, congressman, who's got some influence, state legislators, to try to get them to start cleaning up that lake, and I know you're working on a letter, so when you have that, can you just bring it back, 'cause we all need to sign it, and at least give one strong push to try to get that revived again, 'cause it is a mess. Cindy will carry it on for you.
I heard you going swimming.
I'm not even going near that till it's cleaned up. Megan's going out there, she volunteered for the boat ride. A while there, a couple days, weird things going on.
Anything else? Councilmember Sladek, you're up.
There was an email that went around about whether golf carts could go on public roads, and that is currently not allowed, but we could do something to make it allowed, so wanted to see if anybody else thought that there may be pockets of town where allowing golf carts that are street-safe to traverse.
I thought there was a response from the chief that he was looking into it. Chief, why don't you come on up? I seem to remember you responded, you were gonna go look at other ordinances or something.
Right, currently, in order for golf carts to be allowed, they're not allowed on the streets, street legal or not, unless they are designated by either the county or municipality for that purpose.
All righty, so what do you need from us if we were gonna consider that?
There would be, need to be some type of an ordinance to designate certain streets or certain areas that are golf cart friendly.
Well, can I jump in there real quick? Have you... Yeah, how do we make that determined? You have to do, there has to be a safety study done to show that it's safe to traverse those roads with a golf cart. Wow.
That, that sounds pricey. So we can't just have somebody on staff kinda go and look and say, "Well, we have a golf course in Twin Rivers." We presume that everybody is aware that this is a place where it's sort of safe to be on.
The statute says you have to have a study accomplished to show that it's safe to, to traverse those roads with a golf cart, and then it has to deal with intersections and all of that.
Right, and, and if I'm correct, Mr. Groot, if we don't do that, we place ourselves in some liability if we just say...
Absolutely.
It is without that safety study.
Okay.
Can we find out what a safety study would cost us? Is that possible?
I will talk with, with Mr. Wyatt on that.
All right, thank you.
And before you get too far, any movement on medical marijuana yet? I know I keep asking that, I feel like a broken record.
Right now, there's two bills in front of, the House bill and the Senate bill, each are different, so they're trying to reconcile that, to come up with a final bill, to put it on the floor for a vote before it goes to the governor before Friday.
So in the meantime, Longwood has beat us to the punch. They have some kind of medical marijuana ordinance and have approved it.
You know what I got to say? Good for Longwood. We'll, we'll do the smart thing and we'll wait.
I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement on that one, for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one other thing that may be a little premature, last meeting, there was talk of not wanting to think about the golf course for a little while, and I absolutely respect that, but there's an opportunity to potentially have some students from the University of Florida Center for Governmental Responsibility think about this for us. But the way this cycle works at the school, we have to get our proposal for them to consider even working with us to them before the end of the semester, which is right about now. So if, if there is some consensus that we have a set of goals that we want them to accomplish and just sort of throw it out there to the theoretical hypothetical world and say, "Hey, all you law students working with a little bit of supervision, can you, can you tilt all of the different options to accomplish the collective goals?"
What's the goals?
I have some kind of written down that I think everyone can agree on.
This isn't an item for a report, so...
Okay.
This, this is an item that, it'd have to be a discussion item, it'd have to be, it's a golf course right now, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, absolutely, but there was talk last meeting about doing something towards making sure that it can be maintained as a golf course, but never built on, and there's, you can't just slap a conservation easement on it, because that would limit the golf use, but there's ways to keep houses on it, and it just seems to me like it doesn't hurt to let somebody else think about it, and we can say, "We don't like your ideas, come to center."
We're still in the smell your roses phase.
Smelly roses.
Let's enjoy what we've got. I, I agree with you, eventually, we don't need to go rushing to a end-of-the-semester thing. Why don't we wait till next year?
Well, then, then we're like 18 months out, just, just because of the way the academic cycle works.
We're no hurry, we're not gonna let anything happen to it in several years.
Why, why put off till tomorrow what you could do today?
I'm enjoying today.
I, I would have to agree. I think, let's just be patient, we just bought this, let, these guys are just getting their feet wet, just give them a little time. I, I don't disagree, we're gonna have to look at some other things, but let's just see how this goes and, and how it's gonna work, let's, let's not cloud it up. These guys are out there trying to figure it all out, make the place premiere again, so I think you're just a little early, but, you know, don't rule it out for down the road.
Well, if you think about it again in September, we may be able to hit the January semester cycle, so, seed planted again on that one. And I cannot make it to the chamber meeting, usually Mayor and I go, go to those luncheons on Thursday, so if anybody here is able to go, or perhaps somebody on staff...
What is it?
This Thursday, from 11:30 to 1:00.
Actually, Spencer's graduating, you won't be there. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, Councilman Britton, you're up.
Have you talked, Steve?
You're it, you're last. I mean, you're first next week.
Huh?
That means you're first.
Speaking of smelling the roses, my son does graduate Thursday morning.
Congratulations.
From UCF. My daughter got her nurse's pin last week, so we got two of them moving on in life, and that's, that's important, because we learned last week, we had a friend who's, who lost a child somewhere to the Downings under tragic circumstances, so it tends to put that sort of thing into perspective. So I wanna congratulate my son on, on five years of hard work. Relay for Life, Drew, everyone I know had a good time. The first-place team of the respectable teams was my team, we shot a 58. The first-place team that took the money was, shot a 47?
49.
49? It's hard to believe. Tommy Minton drove the sand trap on number 8 from the tee box. He's a good guy to have on the team, so, but anyway, Drew, that was a great event, let's improve on it, we know what, we've got some lessons learned, I had a great time, and looking forward to a lot more of those. So, the last thing I have is with, with all this stuff, the reason I mentioned Spencer's graduation, is there's a lot of stuff going on this week, and there were too many conflicts to have the Calno meeting here, so we asked if we could postpone that for a few months. We'll get back on the, on the schedule and pick it back up, so Patty Mahaney, the chairman, was gracious enough to let us postpone it, so...
Great.
That's all I have.
Excellent. I'll, I'll say that our team shot a legitimate... I'll say that our team shot a legitimate...
67?
Right? Legitimate. We didn't have an eraser, we didn't need it, but it was, it was a real 67.
For the personal.
Thank goodness, no. And tossing out of the sand trap is a wonderful thing.
Their team was the poster child for why we don't want golf carts on the streets.
Hey, that wasn't our fault. That was Drew's fault for having all those darn tents along the way. But anyway, Drew, it was a great event. I did forget to mention that. 144 golfers, right? Sold it out, I think, just about.
One shot, actually paid it. We didn't have that in the golf cart, we had some no-show.
Well, that's all right, but as long as they paid. As long as the check's clear, that's all that matters. All right, future meeting dates, we have Monday, May 15, 6:30 PM is a regular session. Monday, May 22, 6:00 PM budget work session. Monday, June 5, 6:30 PM regular session. Monday, June 19, 6:30 PM regular session. Monday, June 26, 6:00 PM budget work session. So we got a lot of meetings coming up over the next couple of months.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, good of the order.
Did I get a clarification? Brian, are we gonna meet with the Congresswoman on the 15th? Is that still...
No, sir, that has not been confirmed. We are still trying to work with her schedule, so...
Okay.
So we're trying.
Keep us posted. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, we are adjourned. It is quarter of eight.